It's Wednesday, March 8th, 2023, 6:00 PM. This regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners is called to order. If you will join Mr. Trask in the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
For heavenly Father, we come humbly before you to ask for divine guidance and help in our deliberations this evening. Bless the members of the commission and the citizens that are present. We pray that our work this evening will find favor in your sight. Thus we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as a rule.
Ms. Van Borgen, will you call the roll?
Mayor Hendricks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Here.
Commissioner Taglerini. Commissioner Kerr.
Here.
Commissioner Hudson.
Here.
Will let the record show Commissioner Taglerini is absent.
Thank you. First is public comment. If you have any public comment to make, please step up to the podium, state your name and address. That can be on anything that is not on tonight's agenda. You have three minutes to speak.
Mayor, we've got to do the approval of the agenda, item number four first.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Okay. Approval of the agenda, does anyone have anything on the agenda they want to move or change?
I'm good. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks.
Yes.
The motion carried four to zero.
Okay, next is public comment. If you have a public comment to make, please step up to the podium, state your name and address. You have three minutes to speak on anything that is not on tonight's agenda. Okay, next is the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks.
Yes.
The motion carried four to zero.
Okay, next is public hearings. Ordinance 2023-14, amendment to chapter 54, solid waste, second reading and public hearing. Mr. Trask.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance 2023-14, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending chapter 54, solid waste of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Madeira Beach to amend the definitions of collection center, curbside collection program, garbage can and trash can, to delete refuse as a mandatory service subscription, to add debris accumulation from contractors as waste to be removed by the owner, to amend references to trash container, to add trash to the items prohibited to be buried or burned as garbage, to require that a garbage can or trash can shall have a 64-gallon capacity and that such receptacle shall be provided by the city, to provide for placement of containers for trash collection, to provide for exclusions therefore, to require concealment of garbage in trash cans after collection, to provide for timing of curbside placement and removal of trash cans, to delete section 54-62 regarding inspection and condemnation of containers, to provide for conflict, to provide for severability and to provide for an effective date. That was the second and final reading of ordinance 2023-14 by title only.
Thank you. Floor is open for any other comments on this. Just wait just a second, ma'am. First, we're going to discuss it if we have any discussion, okay? Any discussion amongst the commission? Okay. Now it's time for public comment.
Hi, I'm Christine Ginskey. I live at 532 Crystal Drive in Madeira Beach. And my biggest concern was with the taking the trash can back by a certain time. I just don't want to be sitting at dinner, look at my watch and go, oh my God, I got to get home and get my trash or I'm going to get a ticket. I know that you're trying to make the town look good, but I think that there might be other people in the same situation that work late, that don't get home by a certain time, that it's just, I'm not sure what kind of problem you're really trying to solve with that. And I appreciate any clarification you can give.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Do I have a motion on ordinance 2023-14?
I'd like to talk about it a little bit more. Sure. I kind of see that as a valid issue, that it's got to be in by nightfall. We're not going to really be seeing the cans at nightfall, really. They need to be in that day. I don't see, you know, if it's a, if it's a, we don't want to create any more of a burden than we have to. Just collect the cans. I think that's the whole idea, is we don't want them sitting out there all week or the following day, personally.
Well, I know I have, I have seen them sitting out for days. I think that's the main thing we're trying to avoid here. I don't think it's something that we're going to be running around the city every evening, ticketing people because their garbage can's still out there. I don't think that's our intent, really. And I don't, I don't see that happening.
I would agree. Sometimes you have neighbors that don't get along. I mean, not around me, but.
I don't know, I've talked to some.
You don't want excuses for, for violations, I'll just say.
Yeah.
So, same day.
Is there a fine? I looked again, I couldn't find, is there a fine attached to this?
I don't know that there's a fine.
I mean, I think it's more of a guidelines, just don't leave your trash can out there. I pretty much know that our Pinellas County deputies are not going to spend the evenings driving through the streets and writing tickets, but I don't think there's a, a specific, is there a fine attached to it, Meg?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. No, there's no fine. If, if it becomes an issue, and again, our intent is not to drive around the city to pass out tickets or give tickets if somebody leaves their trash can out until nine o'clock at night. Our intent is to, to clean up the city and for those people that leave their trash cans at the curb. The fine, as we talked to the Pinellas County deputies, would be $93 if we were to fine. And that would be through the sheriffs.
I'm sure that would be after eight warnings.
Absolutely.
Right, and it wouldn't be.
That is, that is a last case scenario.
Ma'am, don't worry about leaving dinner early, you'll be fine. I would, I would imagine that they would give some leniency on that.
Absolutely.
And it's, I think it's more for people to leave them out three or four days.
Yeah.
That is correct.
Okay, so I'm good.
If you're out to dinner, I live on the next street, give me a call, I'll run over and get it for you.
All right. We got now?
Could it just, to avoid it, could it just be adjusted to remove same day? Is that, is that, is that in?
Well, you can, you know, in a motion, you can always mention that. Anyone else? Is there any other public comment on this? Okay, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we, that we approve, wait a minute. That we approve ordinance 2023-14, amendment to chapter 54, solid waste, with the following change, that the cans must be removed same day.
I'll second that.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
I just jump in. I just want to make sure. So, under 54-61, where that language exists, it currently says, "Such containers shall be placed at curbside no earlier than 5:30 PM on the evening slash night before the day of collection and shall be removed no later than sunset on the day of collection." So, my understanding of the motion is that will be midnight, change sunset to midnight, correct?
Yes, that's the intent.
Okay. Thank you.
That's what I get. And sunset, by the time summer gets here, is going to be 8:30 or, you know, at night anyhow, so, okay. And I had a second, correct?
Yes.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks.
Yes.
Motion carry four to zero.
Okay, next is contracts and agreements. First is the King of the Beach Fishing Tournament contract with Old Salt's Fishing Foundation. Floor is open to the commission for comment. This is something we've done for years and years. Old Salt's has been very good to this city. It's a great charitable organization, and I am fine with the contract as written.
Mayor, would you mind if I just jump in here? I just want to give you a couple of comments on this. First of all, this agreement was not written by Old Salt's. This agreement was drafted by me, and, and it is a lot more extensive than the prior agreements. We had a lot of issues to cover, including insurance and indemnification, that type of thing, specifically mentioning the special event process, the special event application, the special event addendums and so forth. It's all included in this agreement. So, it's, it really tightens up what, what is happening or what will happen if the special event applications are actually filed. I also want to let you know that Old Salt has reviewed it, has had an attorney review it, and they have signed it as, as it has been prepared.
Okay, thanks very much. Any other discussion amongst the commission? Is there any public comment on this? Is there a motion?
Wait.
Bill Gay, 423 150th Avenue, Madeira Beach, Florida. I have several comments about this. First of all, I think Old Salt has misrepresented its level of charitable giving. And I explained that, I believe, in a memo which I sent out this morning, an email to members of the city commission here. They claim a substantial amount more in donations than they actually donate when you review their IRS 990 forms. Second, Old Salt has participated actively in municipal elections. Most recently and most egregiously in the 2020 election campaigns of John Hendricks and Helen Price. They were very active in that, those elections. As you all know, Old Salt is a 501(c), and it cannot, by IRS rules, participate in municipal elections or state elections or any elections at all. So, for those reasons, I'm suggesting that both Mr. Hendricks and Mr. Andrews recuse themselves for any discussion on this particular amendment and vote, this ordinance, and voting on this particular ordinance because of their, the involvement of Old Salt in their elections. Old Salt claims on its website, and when Old Salt testified at the last, I don't know which meeting it was, probably January or December meeting, that they've contributed more than $1 million to charity. You know, I've looked at their records going back to 2010. They average about $25,000 a year in charitable donations. For them to reach that million-dollar mark that they've told you in testimony here and on their website, it would take them another 35 years to reach the $1 million mark. The last four or five years, where I have data, Old Salt has income of approximately and revenue of approximately $1.3 million, and they're giving about, on average, about 20, less than $25,000 a year in charitable contributions. So, what I suggested is that the city should begin to do some due diligence on this organization and see if it's the kind of organization the city should be involved in, giving what they claim in charitable donations and what they're actually giving. So, I, I think that the city should review Old Salt's IRS submissions for 2020 and 2021. Old Salt should submit to the city any correspondence from the IRS regarding its tax filings during the last five years. And finally, Old Salt should submit an independent audit of its IRS 990 submissions from 2018 to 2022 to the city for evaluation. The city faces some lawsuits right now, and I think getting in bed and continuing a long-term contract is not a wise decision.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Gay, you are a liar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Is there a motion?
Wait, let's talk about this for a minute. Okay, is there anybody from Old Salt here?
No.
Okay. This is an agreement between the city and Old Salt. From the city's point of view, we get advertising from this. We get help for our commercial venues, restaurants, bars, everything like that.
Fuel purchases.
Fuel purchases. Is there anything?
As well as a number of other things.
Is there?
Books that are kept at the marina.
And all we are agreeing to that's different than the past is we are not going to charge for poking holes in the lawn when they're done.
Right.
Okay.
We also have to remember too, they, you know, maybe there's hard dollar costs of donations, but there's also, they donate thousands of fishing poles to children. They hold events, seawall events. They, they are embedded in part of the DNA of this community. They've been doing it here for a long time. And frankly, if we turn our backs on them, they'll go somewhere else and they'll get paid to do it. They love this area, they, they love this city, and they're, they're as attached to us as we are to them. Listening to that nonsense is just, it's crazy. What, when are we required, especially for somebody we've been doing business with for 25, this is their 30th year? I don't know if they've done them all here, but we're not required to look at their IRS statements. We're not required to do anything along the lines of that. He's talking about being embattled in lawsuits, they're lawsuits that he brings. So, I don't, I don't even know why we'd even take that charlatan seriously. So, let's, I can't even imagine being on a board that would vote an Old Salt contract down. That would just, that would be fun on me, so, I, that's it, that's, I'm done.
Anyone else? Are there any other comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass the King of the Beach Fishing Tournament contract with the Old Salt's Foundation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks.
Yes.
The motion carried four to zero.
Next is the award of RFP 23-01, annual fireworks display. Tell you what you got for us.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm just bringing this back forward from our conversation at the last workshop. Basically, the, the RFP that went out, Master Pyro LLC ended with the $35,000 bid of the four that we received, and it's the one that we were looking forward to move forward with. Excuse me, per the RFP, it is a single year with potential, single year, two potential single year renewals. So, upon the approval from you all, I will move forward with the first year, and I will work on contract information with them and turn it around quickly since the first fireworks display is next week. So, if, that's it. If you guys have any questions, let me know.
I'm good.
I love it, it's different, it's cool.
Any public comment on this? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the award of RFP 23-01, annual fireworks displays.
I'll second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks.
Yes.
The motion carried four to zero.
Now, we are withholding the right to comment on the fireworks after they're done, right?
Yeah, you know, I don't think we will ever see a barge again. If you drive across the Franklin Bridge, that's where all the barges are. They're building a new bridge to stop at the bottleneck where you go over to the airport. So, it'll still be, we'll just have more lanes backed up. Okay. New Business Resolution 2023-02 to enter into a state-funded grant agreement with FDOT for Area 6A. Mr. Trask?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution 2023-02, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, authorizing the city to enter into a state-funded grant agreement with the state of Florida Department of Transportation, FDOT, for the purpose of construction and construction engineering inspection services for the Madeira Beach Roadway Improvements Area 6 project, finding that a public purpose will be served by entering into such agreement, authorizing the mayor to execute the state-funded grant agreement and providing for an effective date hereof. That was the reading of Resolution 2023-02 by title only.
For those looking, it's page 152 to 178. Is there any comment amongst the board?
Good evening, Meghan. I apologize for the memo that was in your packet, but the online version is updated. I had a whoopsie, so I was missing the physical impact, which shows if the grant agreement is for $1 million, we, we receive state funding. And then I also was missing the recommendation to approve the resolution and accept the funds from FDOT.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any discussion? Is there any? Is there any public comment on this? Is there a motion to pass Resolution 2023-02?
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution 2023-02.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks.
Yes.
The motion carried four to zero.
Next is staff reports. Do you folks have anything you want to fill us in on? No, you giving it up? Okay. How's Clover doing? Okay, that's all the report we need there then. Ms. Powers, have you got anything for us?
I do not, but Robin is watching us right now, so, hi, Robin. That's all we got here.
Okay, next is agenda setting for the workshop. I don't see anything on here. Have y'all got anything you'd like to put on that, that agenda?
I'm not going to be here, so I feel like we should leave it for the new people.
Yeah.
But if there's, if there's time, I think you've talked about parks a few times. And David talked about the pocket parks. Do we put that on and brainstorm a little bit? Or what's, we get some type of a plan of what is going forward? What we need to do if there's anything?
I think that's a great subject because I actually called or texted Meghan today because I was out picking up dead fish at the, what I found out is called the Island Drive Park. And I've been trying for three years to get that park fixed up. I had something to say about all the trash that was under the bushes, so the bushes got pulled out. Had something to say about the sprinklers being on during the day, so the sprinklers were pulled out. Had something to say about the lights that shine up at the palm trees being on during the day because of power failures and changing the timers, so the lights were pulled out, so.
That was five-plus years ago.
That's, no, it wasn't, it wasn't five-plus years ago.
It was.
So, not all of it, not all of it.
Dave Marsakano was here when that happened.
But the lights, Dave wasn't here when the lights were pulled out, Meghan.
Okay.
So, anyhow, my point is, why do we pay to fix up parks and then just rip it out rather than maintaining it? So, I think that's a great thing to put on the agenda.
I do have a scope for the pocket parks in Boca Seega. We're just trying to decide if we are able to put kayak launches in there because the city did look into that years ago, but with the size of the properties, you're only allowed to go out 20 feet, and that doesn't necessarily fit ADA. So, I just received that quote back from one of the engineers. So, I'm just waiting to discuss it with Robin.
Okay.
Okay, so, we've got park fix-up.
With shade.
You're pushing it now. They can bring that up on the 22nd, and you and I can sit in the audience and give them heck.
Yeah, I'm sure the, how about, how about we put in an ordinance to reduce the price of boat gas for any retired member of the board so that you guys can go fishing and going on your sailboat and stuff like that? Can we do that and let you guys do it at cost or something?
Can't believe you're leaving. How could I oppose that? I want to hear.
Seriously.
Why didn't I write that down?
I'd like to discuss any undergrounding on Gulf Lane before it's paved. There's been a lot of residents in that area that have complained about, you know, that spring breakers and whatnot, not having facilities to use, so they're, they're going to the bathroom and they're, on their property, things like that. So, at least do some undergrounding with some electric and maybe some sewer main for if we wanted to put any bathrooms at any of the beach entrances, that that would be there before, you know, we don't want to bring this up after it's all paved out. And how, yeah, how expensive could it be?
That, to put a bathroom in is very expensive.
No, I'm just talking about the undergrounding.
That's already underway.
This, the, well, let's just.
That's part of what we approved.
The underground, not the, not the utility, not the utility to the residents, but if you want to tie into some septic and, and put a cap on it, it's some PVC pipe.
They don't have septic up there that I know of.
Well, where does their septic go to?
It goes to the sanitary sewer.
Well, the sanitary sewers, I was using the wrong term.
Meghan? We're going to reserve you a seat right up here, huh?
It's okay, I'm just getting my steps in today. So, you would like to discuss to put in a bathroom facility, is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, at minimum.
May I ask where? Because we don't have any room over there unless we were to take up a parking lot.
Okay.
And the only way that we would be able to put in a bathroom facility, it would be a trailer like we have at Kitty Stewart, which the cost of that trailer was, back then, was about $75,000 to $80,000. Currently, now, that, it's probably about $100,000, and it's not worth the money.
Is it tied into the sewer?
That is tied into the sewer, yes.
Okay. I'm just looking for some options, I wanted to be able to at least talk about it.
Sure.
On a workshop, does it, does it make, does it make sense to run any, do we need any power for lighting? Do we need any showers for sand?
We do have some, some showers at locations. We will be undergrounding the power, but that's not, that, that's not hard to do and after the fact. if we were to need power, because we can just run off of what's already there. Gulf Lane is a very small area, so just like we do at Archibald.
Okay, how many, how many beach access points along Gulf Lane?
We have 135th to 130th, so five.
Okay.
But they're all very small, and we're actually in a couple areas.
I'm just, I'm just trying to take the points from the residents of why they're finding people going in on their property, and that's one of the big ones. They would need a place to urinate.
We, I honestly tell you that we have that same issue at Archibald, at South Beach, at Tom and Kitty Stewart Park, even places where we have the facilities, it's an issue. So having facilities isn't going to stop that.
And I do know that Robin has spoken with the Sheriff's Department, and they have added extra deputies, as well as one of the beach vehicles downstairs for that reason.
Right, I've heard residents in that area are very, very appreciative of that.
Well, you know, that may be something, and this is really discussion for a workshop, that you may want to look at incorporating in the parking garage.
We, I think if we, we would definitely put in a bathroom facility in a parking garage, yes, that would be a must.
And I know that's a number of years down the road now, but, but it makes no sense to put in a bathroom facility and then, you know, in what, probably one to two years, build a parking garage and...
Yeah.
Would signage help?
So it's, it's on the list.
Okay.
That would be my circus.
Red tide has made a kind of a national splash, I saw on national news on Friday. Is this a good time to bring this issue about the federal lobbyists up to the Big C? Make that a big push, and there's going to be a new representative for the Big C. I want to make sure that that makes their...
Well, you know, all of the mayors, all the communities are concerned about red tide. The county's been doing as much as they can to pick it up. You're not going to stop it. This bloom was exacerbated by Hurricane Ian that stirred up the bottom and brought all the nutrients to the surface when it came through, and it has moved north, and now it's here. Everybody can do their part. As Meghan knows, I've been at Island Drive Park picking up buckets of dead fish myself, on my own.
I would like to add that we have very low levels and have had this week, so while the dead fish on the beach were a little bit higher on the weekend, this past weekend, it's much better, it's very minimal. I have a roll-off container down at South Beach for cleanup on the beach, and yes, there's been few areas where there's been fish in the canals, but it's definitely improved.
Yeah, it has, and I think the last report I saw this morning...
Just today.
We were the lowest, I think the lowest of all the communities.
That's correct.
So...
But it's an ongoing problem, and if there's anything that Fish and Wildlife or federal dollars could do, now would be the time to ask for it. That's my, that's my point.
They just opened up the Pinellas County Web EOC for red tide cleanup. Just today, I just, I just received that email.
Well, just for the study of preventing the red tide. It's been devastating the last few years.
Well, it's devastating to us, but what people don't realize is that they have red tide even in Alaska. I thought for a long time it was, it went by the temperature of the water, but that's not necessarily true when you can have it in Alaska. So it's just a phenomenon that's exacerbated by the nutrients in the water, so...
More about the federal lobbyist for the Big C, and that's, that would be a perfect, now that it's on the national news, perfect timing for lobbyists to see if there was federal funds that can be, I mean, there has to be more study on what causes the red And then lastly, just like to get an update on, I don't know if the workshop would be the best place, but on any progress on the property on the 95th Street that we were looking at purchasing. Has any been, and any progress on that?
I have a list here that the city manager has added for the March 22nd workshop.
Oh, okay, good, just, yeah.
Yeah, and that is included, I think that's what it is. There's two presentations by the fire department. There's an Area 5 and 6 scope approval that Meghan would like to talk about. There's a parking presentation, and then there's consider purchasing parcel on First Street East, is that it? Okay. And then city manager's report that he has on there, and then the proposed 2023 Florida Legislature Bills Impacting Cities.
Okay, that was 95th Street, right?
Is that the same one, Meghan?
No, it's a different one, but we can add the 95th on that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it? Okay, next is reports and correspondence. Board of Commissioners, have you all got anything?
Okay, this is the correspondence, but can we please assign someone else to be the backup to the library board? It's an easy job, Happy does everything.
Yeah, and it's, that probably should be on the workshop, yeah.
Okay.
I would just like to thank the two gentlemen that flanked me on either side here for their dedication and their devotion to this city. This was a very diversified board, but I'll tell you what, we got a lot accomplished, and enjoy retirement, fellas. We'll miss you, all right?
Thanks, Doug. Mr. Kerr, you got anything for us?
No, just like to reiterate what Vice Mayor Andrews said. Thank you for your service.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Trask, have you got anything for us?
Yes, just a minute of your time. I want to let you know that I've had the opportunity to review the request for an investigation that was filed by Mr. Rostak. I have reviewed that, I have reviewed the case law in relation to the request. I have reviewed the information that was provided by the city manager, and I issued a memorandum, basically it was an email, Mr. Kerr, Commissioner Kerr had specifically requested whether or not it was any violation of the law, and I wanted to bring your attention, if you haven't read it, that I did issue an email to Commissioner Kerr on February 20th on the issue that is, that was raised, and specifically I addressed, you know, whether it would be a violation or not in relation to the allegations in Mr. Rostak's letter of February the 10th, and then ultimately I opined on whether it would be an intentional or unintentional violation. But what I wanted to mention to you was, is that even though this commission has the ability to ask a charter official to do some type of investigation, you're really not the proper entity to be doing that. And the reason I say that is, is that there is an Attorney General opinion, and there is a state statute that talks about who the investigatory agency would be, and in this particular case, would be the state attorney's office if there was a violation. So it's not appropriate for, in my opinion, for this commission to do any type of investigation, and it's not necessary under the law, and I don't frankly think it's appropriate. So at this point, I'm closing my file on the issue unless and until something further happens, but I believe that it's been addressed.
Thank you. Ms. Powers, do you have anything?
I do not.
Ms. Van Blargen, have you got anything for us?
I do. Reminding everybody of the election on the 14th, seven to seven, and hope we get a great turnout, and those that didn't vote by mail. And also, if everything goes well and the election results are certified by that Friday and on time, we're doing the swearing-in ceremony on March 22nd, and the outgoing commissioners would get a plaque, and the new ones would get sworn in, and there's going to be, that's at 4:30 on 22nd, here in the commission chambers. And following that is a reception, a light reception, and then, of course, the workshop will continue at 6 o'clock.
Thank you. Wow, finally I get a plaque.
Well deserved.
With that, this meeting is adjourned at 6:39.